All right, I'm gonna open the.
Recording in progress.
I'm gonna open the Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is October 21st and it is 5:36. Um, this is being recorded by local cable and will be shown on YouTube as well. And if I can get a motion to Zoom, the reading of the Zoom.
So moves.
Whitman seconds.
All right, all in favor?
Benoit I.
Whitman I.
And Neil's I. All right, um, do we have anybody on for public comment?
I don't see anyone from the public, Lyndon.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, then we'll go right into our discussion for possible action with fiber optic plan slash spectrum.
So, Mr. Chairman members, thank you for doing this special meeting. And believe me, I wouldn't have asked for it unless I felt there was a really important need for it. Uh, as you know, we've been working with Charter, Spectrum to develop a fiber optic plan and we came before you with one change already from the original plan. And then God knows, we hoped that that would be the end of it, but it isn't. Uh, we were discussing with fiber optic, the guys out in the field discovered some switches and things that were not part of the plan that they believe have to be changed in order to make the plan work. And that increased both the cost of the plan where we would have to allocate another $38,000 of American Funds Act. It also increases the three-year cost after this is over if we wanted to continue moving with with Charter. Needless to say, that caused a lot of frustration. Uh, and I expressed that frustration directly to, uh, the woman Cassidy who's been in charge of this program. Uh, I I felt that this is something that they should have found out during the process when they gave us the estimate and not after we already are this far into the program. And expressed to her that I really believe that, you know, Charter should take care of this money. They shouldn't put it back on us because they should have known about this in the first place. She apologized profusely for their error, but that really didn't didn't help us a lot. She she said that that price discounted a lot of things and were discounted, but at the end of the day, it's it's significantly more money. And we weren't gonna move forward until we had a conversation with the Board of Selectmen. And frankly, uh, I've talked a lot, me, Mike and Paul had a long conversation with Cassidy about this. There's been some frustration into the implementation of this project and and it effectively had actually, uh, shut down our dispatch for a day. Uh, so we, you know, we haven't exactly felt a huge level of trust as this process has gone on. Now, with that said, there's still an option of, there's a variety of options that Paul and and Mike are gonna talk about and they're gonna show it to you in the presentation. But I'm not saying at this point, I really wanna have that discussion with you. I'm not saying we should abandon the Charter project or Spectrum project. But I think that there's a fair chance that we will, depending upon our conversation. Uh, because there are still some significant, uh, positives going down that route. Um, as a matter of fact, just to let you know, Barry had the exact same problem with us. Uh, and they chose to to pay the extra money and continue with the project. But, you know, Barry's not us and we have to make our own decision as to how we wanna move forward. With that, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'd like Mike to be able to put up his presentation and discuss, and then we can take questions after he goes through the various options. Okay?
All right, bear with me.
So Paul over there, I think you remember him from last time. He's with CM Geeks, he's one of the owners or, I think he's an owner of CM Geeks, if not, he's a high-level manager. Uh, but he's, he's got a lot of expertise in this field. And Michael's been kind of my town point person on this as well.
Okay, I think I did it correctly, I'm not sure.
There, Mike, it's good.
Yep, it's good, Mike.
All right, perfect. All right, so like Ron was saying, there's, there's a couple of options that the town has, uh, moving forward, uh, from here. And we'll just go option by option for now. Come on, all right. Um, so option one is to abandon the whole project completely, um, and request uh, approximately $16,000 of free cash to renew the Meraki licenses for all the current network equipment that the town has. Um, that's all the switches, uh, wireless access points throughout the, uh, town buildings. That's option one. Um, the downfall of option one is, uh, there's no change to the network. Uh, there's no fiber run to the water treatment facility or the council and agent. Uh, so those are a couple of the downfalls. Um, Paul, is there any other downfalls to going with option one? As far as what I.
No, I'm, but for three years, like I said, um, it it will continue running the network pretty much as we're doing that. Uh, and, um, you know, at the end of that three years, there will be a proven attendant light that we're gonna have to do something, which will be the significant cost to the town. And the, just so there's no confusion, if we went forward with the Charter project, we would defer some costs. Those, that cost deferment wouldn't exist because we're not going forward with the Charter project.
Hey, Paul, if you would address, because the Finance Committee had a question about this and there was some frustration about nothing was put in the operating budget this year to deal with that licensing. Can you, to me, had a conversation about that? Can you briefly explain why this wasn't part of the budget process?
Yeah, I started asking early before budgeting season started with, uh, Connection, who's a Cisco vendor and is under state contract. And, um, they never got back to me, so. One of the things you're gonna, the, the impact of COVID hurt a lot of things. So when all the schools went, you know, remote and everyone started working remote, they were just trying to procure equipment. They were not interested in getting a quotes that, you know, were proactive. So we just fell into that loop where they just failed to work it. I followed up with them three or four times. And finally, I think we got the numbers in April, which was after the budgeting season, which at that time I shared them with Mike and, with Mike, because Rattlin's the owner of these licenses, so how do we divvy them all up? Uh, and we made a spreadsheet on, you know, through the departments and stuff, but it was after the budget, so it was after we planned for budgets. So it's been a very frustrating, you know, COVID's put us in a very frustrating situation and everybody's probably failing it. Uh, if if you try to buy a printer or a TV or something like that, I mean, inventory stinks because of, um, the chip shortage and everything else, so there's this a second dramification, people are getting back to work. And now there's no product available. And, you know, it's very difficult to even buy a new car because volume's very low that's coming through the daily ships. Because they can't produce the cars, they've got acres of cars sitting there waiting for chips. So, um, but anyways, back then, it was human resource, and we, we pushed everybody home. And, um, that created a huge uptick in volume for procuring IT equipment and people focused on, you know, um, what was important need, which was getting people working in remote locations. So, I, you know, we failed to get quotes for that. And it was all because of lack of response.
Yeah, continue with the presentation.
Okay, cool. So that's, that's option one. Um, option two. Um, this is moving forward with the Charter project, so, um, the $38,880, um, which, what I was just told is probably gonna increase a little bit more because of there's additional equipment off of the quote that Cassidy provided us that is still not on the quote. Um, so that number is going to go up, um.
Just, I would comfortably add $3,000 to that, it's probably going to be less, but I know there are two access points in the library that are missing. Again, I sent Cassidy a detail of our inventory, asked her to update it right after our meeting on, I think it was Monday, and, uh, she has not updated it yet.
So that's the additional cost that Charter is requesting to move forward with this project, uh, with all that missing equipment that Ron did explain earlier. Um, so it's roughly around that ballpark, um, number. Um, the current contract price that the town signed, um, with Charter was 149,040. Um, add in that 38,000 to that, we're roughly rate around 187,920, uh, that would be the new contract price. Um, like, like we said before, the benefits of moving forward with Charter is having them run the fiber to the council and agent and the water treatment facility, which alone would cost a hundred and probably 70,000 dollars that they estimated it to be. Um, as well as new network equipment in all the town buildings, so that's gonna replace all those switches, all those wireless access points. After the 36 months though, um, what the town needs to realize is that after this 36 months, we either have to sign negotiate a new contract with Charter. Um, but at the current rates that I'm using from what they provided with us just right now, we'd be looking at, uh, $5,200 a month for their managed services. So that's for the internet and all the equipment, uh, any equipment that needs to be replaced with defective or end of life, um, that would cover all those costs. Um, if we elect to cancel at the end of the 36 months, we'll have to purchase all new switches, wireless access points for all the town buildings. Um, so so those are the options with option two, the pros and cons, uh, with that. Just moving into the last option and then we can open it up for discussion. Uh, the third option, which we're still, um, investigating on, if we can utilize some of the ARPA money just to replace the network equipment. Uh, so what we were discussing, me and Paul were discussing is if we utilize only $7,000 in free cash and renew the current Meraki licenses for all the town equipment right now, just renew them and then utilize ARPA funds to replace all the equipment throughout the all, through all the town buildings, uh, which would alleviate a huge sum of money after the three years was up, because we have three years. In three years, we need to replace all this equipment, no matter what. Um, so if we could utilize ARPA funds to replace that equipment and not have to u- utilize town funds or free cash, that was our goal. Uh, but again, this option does not include anything with the fiber running to the council and agent or the water treatment facility. I do have calls out to Phoenix Communications to see how much it would cost to run fiber, uh, through Phoenix and not through Charter. Um, from our building to the water treatment facility and the council and agent. Um, I have not received any calls back yet, um, but that would be part of this option as well. And from there, we'll just open it up for all the questions.
There's just a comment on this third option. You know, the ARPA funny, funding deals with broadband and I'm not convinced yet that this option three, that we could use ARPA funding for tonight, is something we'd have to look at, but because it's not really a major broadband project, I'm not sure if we qualify that.
So that's the, does anybody have any comments, Carol or Leah, do you?
I have a couple of questions. Um, I thought that when we had the meeting back in September, I think the 23rd or so, um, there was discussion that we wouldn't, with Spectrum, we would not actually be able to run the fiber to um, the water treatment plant and we would have to be utilizing another option anyway, and that we had already increased, uh, payment over the 149,040 at that meeting also. Um, can you guys refresh my memory on that?
So the, okay, Mike.
Yeah, so Charter did say that they would not run dark fiber from our public safety building to those two facilities. We could contact Phoenix Communications, could possibly run the dark fiber. Uh, I believe they are the ones that originally ran the dark fiber between all the town buildings that we currently have right now, so it'd just be in addition to what they've, they did in the past. Um, so that's, that's what I was talking about, uh, there, not having Charter run it, but having another company come in and run it.
Right, but I guess, Lyndon, sorry if I may, through option, I was kind of looking at option two, like, my question, I guess, was kind of based around option two. Um, where, how was the, was the fiber getting to the water treat, how was the fiber getting to the water treatment facility under option two? And I thought that, um, we had already increased the current contract price above and beyond 149,040 um, because they had come back saying that they needed, um, additional money, or was that just that they couldn't do some of the project that we had originally thought that that money would include?
So the second.
Well, we had thought originally is that we were gonna own, they were gonna run new dark fiber to the senior center and to the water treatment plant. And we found out that they weren't gonna do that, so it wasn't an increase in the cost of the contract by that point. But if, Mike, if I understood it, I thought the fact is they already owned a fiber line and they were gonna run something from the connection near the school to the senior center and to the, uh, water treatment, but we wouldn't in fact own it. Is that not right?
No, that, that's sort of right, yes.
So Charter, uh, Spectrum, they own fiber on the poles already. So the majority of the fibers run, all they would have to do is terminate strands of fiber, but it's gonna be running across their fiber, which means it's on their network. And they virtualize a network on their network for us.
So it's, it's, it's called lit fiber, that's what they have out there right now. Dark fiber is they run a piece of fiber for us, we utilize it and we're the only ones on that piece of strand. Uh, that's why they consider it dark fiber.
So we have to light it with our equipment, whereas Charter's lighting it with their equipment in the, um, option two.
We, you follow that. So, so what, yeah, so what they were doing is utilizing their lit fiber that they already had. They were still gonna run that fiber to there, but it's not dark fiber like we originally requested at the beginning of this project.
So I, I guess then as a follow-up is if we were to go forward with option two then, and at the end of the the three years when the costs balloons, um, are there, is that going to be an issue because it's still, we're on their fiber versus our own dark fiber? And I, I have to be honest, through this whole process, I have lost trust in Spectrum. Um, and so I am really struggling with trying to make this work and I'm a huge proponent of getting especially the water treatment facility up to speed so that hopefully we can modernize that facility a little bit and get automation and everything going. But I feel like this is just a, a rabbit hole of added expenses that they're looking to charge us for because we have the ARPA funds and whatever, and at the end of the three years, it's a black hole as to what our actual expenses are gonna be and what equipment we would be responsible for or not, because it seems like they're just looking for things and I don't have a lot of confidence.
So I, I agree with you. So at the end of the three years, when, it, it'll say we go with option two, and I'm not suggesting we do that, but if we do go with option two and then we pull out, what we could do to reduce this number, this number will still be higher than it is today, but we could put an internet, a fiber internet connection using the fiber that Spectrum pulled for this in the council of aging and the water department, then use our equipment to VPN back here. For the buildings that we have docked fiber to, we would like that fiber with our own, but but the internet cost would go up because you'd be looking at a fiber connection in the council of aging and in the water department that would be running at much greater speeds, probably reducing down to 100 meg, which is what we have here at the public safety. And, um, uh, we would virtualize our own network with our equipment. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I still, it seems like there's a lot of potential for Spectrum to come back and kind of give us issues or added expenses or, oh, well, we didn't, we actually don't wanna turn that over to you, you have to do this or that or whatever. Um, so I don't, I, looking at, I don't, I mean, I don't know if Carol and Lyndon, if you guys have questions specifically, looking at the three options, if there is a way to use the ARPA funds to get Phoenix to run the fiber optics for us, kind of going, looking, leaning more towards option three now and taking Spectrum out, and then um, it gives us some time to kind of figure out. I, I feel like we're rushed because of the December deadline and I feel like Spectrum is just looking for the ARPA funding, and so I would not like to just, we, we have the money and throw it at them for the sake of throwing it at them. Um, if we can do something that we originally wanted using ARPA funds and it's gonna put the town in control of things and we'll have a better handle on the, the expenses after um, the initial kind of build-out fees, um, that's kind of where I'm heading. But I don't know, Carol and Lyndon definitely appreciate your perspective.
Ron, you, you had mentioned that Barry is going ahead with the project. Did they experience the same difficulties? Did they go back to Barry with additional costs on several occasions?
John, on the one occasion, on this occasion, yes. They didn't have the same problem with, you know, running lines to the senior center and the water department like we did. But this exact problem with these finding new switches and everything, it had to be replaced, yes. They're telling us this is identical to the same problem we have that Barry's having, and Barry in fact did vote to move forward. I gotta be honest, Lyndon, I'm, I'm sort of in the same mindset as Leah in terms of I don't feel that warm and fuzzy trust for them. In the beginning, I felt good about it. But I, they do make me feel very uncomfortable and that's why I, you know, if, if this, truthfully, if this project had came to me in the full amount of money with a full explanation, I'd probably be recommending it. But given that it changes and it keeps moving and that they feel that frankly, they've been pretty incompetent in the way they've been doing this, it, I have so much doubt, I, I don't, I don't know. I like option two in that it's gonna move the, all the equipment from here and move it to the police station, which would be much better, a much more controlled environment. We are gonna get the water department and the senior center up, which I think is really important. But I gotta admit that, you know, they haven't done anything to make me feel confident that they're gonna get this to right. And, and that's my frustration at this point, so I can't openly go, let's go with option two, with something we have to discuss together, because I don't know that they're not gonna screw up again. They screwed up twice already and it's only been, what, weeks, you know?
Uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to add to that. So I, I think what we're having is a communication problem with the salesperson. I don't think it's intentional, I just don't think she's really got a good idea of the details. So when Mike and I said something, she made an assumption, carried on, told us what we wanted to hear. Again, I don't think it was intentional, but, you know, technically it was, you know, and actually, so. The technical, they found this, so when they, when the project management, the technical people got involved, they found this disconnect. So, um, you know, just wanna be fair to the parties involved. But when they changed the wavelength on the optics, yeah, I mean, it took us down, you know, um, Thursday, uh, Friday morning, I think it was about 1:30, took us down, we couldn't get back up until eight because they didn't understand, you know, their own network and how these facilities were tied in. It, it should have been obvious to them, in my opinion. And then we had some bad luck with some bad equipment, we were down, you know, um, I think close to 12 hours that Sunday. So, you know, I spent, you know, most of that day at the annex, babysitting Charter, escorting Charter into the building so that they could pick and they escorted.
My, my nasty letter to Cassidy, you know, she's the front person for Spectrum. And, you know, I think Paul's probably correct, she's, is good in the job, as she should be. But to me, that's not our problem. They put her out front, you know, when she makes a mistake, they should live up to her mistake, and that's what aggravated me. And I have seen no effort by them to say, you know what, we're gonna help you in some way from our screw-up, I really haven't seen that. Well, you agreed it, I, I was pretty strong with Cassidy and I didn't really get, okay, we made a mistake, let's, here's how we can help you, I got nothing.
Sorry. I, I mean, obviously I have the same frustration. I mean, I think our board was very clear with the first meeting that we had concerns regarding the, the actual cost it would be to the town. And we had a very lengthy discussion. Um, and it concerns me that here we are the third time discussing it with additional costs. And I agree, they should in some way be compensating their mistakes um, to, you know, accommodate us to some degree. They, I think they're just thinking, oh, this is federal free grant funds and they're just gonna keep just adding on to it because like, it's not, you know, it's not our money or something like that. I, I, I just don't like the way that it's, they're operating at this point, and I have the same concerns going forward, not having much faith in, uh, in the way that they're gonna manage things.
So this is, I think, the, uh, first time we're looking at increasing costs. But the expectation set that when we were done, we could use that fiber with our own equipment, it has a financial impact, but we weren't looking for more dollars at that point, so. Again, miscommunication bothers me because Mike and I, we both believe, we were very clear when we were talking with Cassidy. So, and I've asked Mike, did I screw this up? I mean, and, um, you know, both of us, you know, brought up our concerns and what our goals were and we were assured that, yep. And, um, so, again, I, I don't even understand the disconnect and, you know, I always question myself in these matters and you know, Mike's pretty direct with me, we've known each other a long time, he goes, no, I don't think you did anything wrong and I don't think I did anything wrong, we both voiced this, so. I mean, I do have some concerns with the miscommunication between Spectrum and, um, Rattlin.
Yeah, I, I mean, and I, and I kinda agree with Leah on option three, although I, I hate to be tapping into free cash more and more all the time when we are so tight on funding. Carol, do you have any comments or concerns?
I, I do. Um, option two, I'm now confused, uh, not surprised, but I'm confused. So the new contract price of 187,920, does that, when I, when you were going through it, Mike, it sounded like that does not include the council and aging and water treatment facility that we would need to go to Phoenix?
Uh, yes, it does. That, that includes everything, so.
Okay.
Two is sticking with Charter and everything's gonna get completed.
Okay.
Well, that's gonna be about $3,000 more than that 187,920.
Yeah.
I, I, I think it'll be less than 3,000, but, you know, there, I know there are access points missing in the library.
Okay, so bait and switch might be too much of a, a, that must be too harsh, but that's, everybody's put out their opinion, that's what I feel like has happened to us. It's like, here's the carrot, the target keeps moving and we're chasing it, but aside from that, Mike and Paul, my concern is, as Leah mentioned, that December deadline. Are we still really over a barrel in that sec, in that option two's the only way that we're really gonna get there?
Um, well, if we, if we don't wanna pull from free cash, yes. Okay, so we can extend it, we, we can kick this can down the road for, you know, $16,000 without bringing in the water department or COA from a fiber standpoint. Or we can kick it down the road for a year for 7,000. Again, the numbers will be slightly left, we, we padded them just a little bit in case we forgot something. Um, the, the reason why the three year, the option one's a good reason is because you basically get a year for the same cost as you would if you tried to do two years. So if we're gonna select one year, we're gonna, you know, we should really replace the equipment or we're looking at another $7,000 for another year. And next year, if we renew, we won't have a three-year option because the equipment's gonna go end of life. So we don't wanna go in more than three years because the equipment's going end of life.
So to be clear, don't, don't let the free cash number bother you. 16 grand's not gonna be a problem this year's free cash, I don't have the certified number. But that shouldn't be the concern. The question really we need to ask ourselves is what is the best option for us in terms of the services we want and the costs involved and I'm not, you know, I know the, the frustrating part of using the ARPA funds is adding another 38 grand, but the bigger cost that concerned me is at the end of the three years, if we decide we want to have them do the managed services, that, that is a little bit more complicated because at the end of three years, if we don't go with them, we're looking about adding, well, it's not quite 62,064 to the budget, because some of those costs I think we already have is part of our cost anyway, right? Where's that, a brand-new 62,640 to the budget?
No, you're already budgeting money in there, that's just the total for the managed services from their, uh, company.
Did you, Mike, you know how much we're budgeted for?
I think there's only about eight or nine thousand that actually is, uh, redundant that comes up, right? Because of the air connections, was it more?
I think you're budgeted, what, 12, 12,000 for internet, Ron?
Yeah, I think that's about it. So I think you're looking at somewhere around a $50,000 potential increase that the Board of Selectmen after three years will have to look at. But, you know, that's, that's an annual basis cost where at the end of three years, we're gonna have to buy a bunch of equipment that could be 75 to 100-plus grand, you know, to keep it without the managed services for us to run it, right? You think it's about somewhere near 100 grand to buy all the equipment at the end of the three years?
Yep.
So, you know, it, it, financially, this is kind of a difficult one because there's pluses and minuses of going each way here. financially, this is kind of a difficult one cuz there's pluses and minuses of going each way here. Um, I, my only concern with option three is I'm not convinced that we're gonna be able to use ARPA funding to buy the equipment, um, because it's, you know, most of what we're doing here, moving the equipment from here to town hall, you know, improve, proving switches and stuff is not, I don't think it's considered broadband and ARPA money is designed around broadband. So I guess if you add Phoenix Run Wires of broadband, I think that might be included, but a lot of it, I'm not convinced would be included in the ARPA funds in in option three. I just don't know yet. It's too early. I haven't, we really haven't studied it, but the title is clear, it's broadband. I'm not sure what falls under, and and option three falls under broadband.
And we don't understand the cost of running fiber. So I found, you know, an an estimate on the internet that was about forty thousand dollars a mile. But I don't know if that's Massachusetts. I mean, right-of-ways are the things that cost a fortune, you know, pulling the cables not all that much money. Pulling it, you know, is just labor, but, you know, getting through all the right-of-ways easements and that's what it really adds up.
So can I ask a question to you, I guess, Paul and Mike? I mean, if you guys come but I know I haven't, if you come to a conclusion as to what you think the best option is of the three, and I know it's hard cuz you have this mindset of of Spectrum and I'm I'm like you have the lack of confidence, but if you guys come to your own conclusion of what you think is the best option to go, I guess I'm asking, do you have any recommendation for the board of selectmen? I know I I'm uncomfortable making one, given where we're at.
I think Charter is the best solution other than having our own dark fiber. And that's because the town's already got such an investment in dark fiber. If we can just add these two facilities, unfortunately, they're furthest facilities away. And what I don't understand is the cost of that. So we could pull those in and, um, and kick this can down the road for three years. If we could get that fiber paid for by the ARPA funds, we, I'd say kick the can down the road for three years. Let's start planning and that hundred thousand dollar purchase for new switches and new routers and, um, do it in three years. It gives us three years to prepare the town for it. I don't think this, I don't think in town government we can save money. It goes to free cash and we're gonna go through the same process to get it out of free cash if there's money left over, right? Um, but we can certainly, you know, prepare to sell it to the townspeople if this is an expense that's coming up.
So if I ain't hearing you right, you're you're suggesting still option two?
Yeah, my concern is I don't even know if we'll get Phoenix to do all the estimates and everything else to actually make a decision on the ARPA funds for dark fiber if we can even pull it and fit it in. I would imagine it's going to fit in the ARPA fund cuz, you know, we can say it's fiber, we're, you know, connecting everything through fiber.
Um, Mike, you, are you on the same same page or what are you on, Mike?
Uh, yeah, uh, li- like Paul said, is getting those estimates and getting the price from Phoenix is the issue. I've I have about four to five calls into Phoenix already, email, an email in there um, and a contact that I had that I reached out to. So I, multiple times reaching out to Phoenix and it's still to this day, I don't have anything whatsoever on if they can, um, if they will, or how much at this point. Um, and the main reason, I think, we we kinda grabbed on to Charter is that Charter is gonna run that fiber for us to the council and agent and the water treatment facility. And in their estimates that Charter had, that 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 was gonna run them around a hundred and, I think it was like a hundred and seventy thousand dollars alone just to run the fiber to those two buildings. So as a as an option of bundling that in and getting it part of the ARPA, um, through option two and replacing all the equipment before December, uh, at this point, right, right now, I think that that would be the best option. Without getting anything from Phoenix.
So my last comment is just, for whatever it's worth, and I'm not the technical guy here, so I I'm, I'm for, I think I would lean for either option one or two. Um, but I I, you know, if you guys do decide to go forward with option two, you're gonna have to have a motion to increase that, uh, thirty, that that, you know, to use ARPA funds for another three, let's say another twenty-five hundred bucks from the plus to thirty-eight, eight eighty. So whatever you wanna do, if you wanna pull a plug on this, I can support that just as easy and go with option one. Um, or if you wanna just feel crappy about it and do what we think has some benefit to town, you can, we can go for the option two, but it I like you, we don't have a lot of faith. It annoys me where we are.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, if I may?
Can you, can you hear me now? Sorry. Yeah, go ahead, Peter, just identify yourself.
Okay, thank you. Peter Crane, Nate's Way. Um, I remember back at the original presentation from Spectrum that the expectation was that at the end of three years, if we don't continue the contract, that we would just basically take over the fiber that they laid to the to the community center and the water treatment plant. And with the change that came in where they're not gonna run fiber in that way, that we're doing magical other things, including magic, you know, VPNs and all of that to get through Spectrum's system to connect, to affect, to virtually connect the systems. Do we have any idea what the cost would be to continue the service to those two buildings or would we have to then or by then have run our own dark fiber to take over those connections? And and again, I know we don't know how much fiber costs, but I don't know there any other equipment costs that we'd have to worry about in three years to make this transition if that was the right path in three years?
So to 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 continue that, we would the most cost-effective way of doing that would be to put high-speed fiber internet connections in the council of aging and in the water department, then run on our own hard-rap VPNs back to, um, the town's network. So right now, you got DPW, you've got community hall, you got the annex, and you got public safety all running off one internet connection. When I say back to the town offices, that's the network and that's the network all connected with dark fiber. So since we don't have dark fiber there, we would utilize a high-speed internet connection and then VPN them back to here, a lot like what we do at Barry PD so they can access the IMC server.
So then we would be paying Spectrum for internet service for those two buildings then, is what it sounds like?
Yes, that would be correct. That would be the increased cost. So now, we were told, you know, again, I thought our internet costs were going to go up, but they haven't. So a hundred meg internet connection, which would be sufficient for those, is four hundred and fifty dollars a month. Presently, that's what the town of Rutland's paying for the, you know, town of cluster, which is those four or five buildings. Obviously, you'd be looking at a four hundred and fifty dollar circuit for council of aging, four hundred and fifty dollars, one hundred and fifty dollar circuit for the water department to have a hundred meg pipe back to the town's infrastructure. And then, yeah, we would need routers, but, you know, we're looking at, you know, routers that are costing about two thousand with three years of service.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, if I may, it's Leah. My, again, going back to option two, like my biggest concern, I think, is that after the three years, what I feel like there's still a lot of unknowns and, you know, just because we think that Spectrum is on board with us taking over the equipment that was, you know, Peter's question was pretty much what I was getting at before. Um, after the three years, if we don't have the dark fiber and we're going off theirs, what's to say that they're not gonna suddenly come back and say something different or keep increasing the cost after that? I mean, this is already significantly more than what we were looking at after our meeting, our previous two meetings or three meetings with them. So I'm, I don't know. I'm very, very hedgy about the the afterlife of continuing with option two.
And I, and I think we were pretty clear that we were concerned about what the the cost after the three years would be. Um, cuz we had a lot of questions initially about that and I'm not, I don't have a lot of faith in the answers we got because things have keeps on, keep on changing. So I have to see what happens with three.
And Leah, the the dark fiber right now that we have is not all available there. So come the end of the thirty-six months, we can reutilize that dark fiber back to the current operations that we have right now and how the town will integrate.
Right, but but my concern is with the council on aging and the water departments not the, having the dark fiber and then you know, if we are making, if we are able to somehow make upgrades to the water treatment plant and suddenly get that automated and then in three years, we suddenly don't have the internet connectivity that we thought we did without paying an arm and a leg or being forever indebted to Spectrum or whatever that case may be, that seems like a very real possibility, given all of this back and forth. And again, my personal lack of trust and confidence in Spectrum is definitely feeding into this. But I feel like it's almost a, uh, to use Carol's term, a bait and switch a little bit. They they hook us in and we move our infra, our town infrastructure forward with an understanding that we have such and such internet acts, internet speeds and capacity and networking. And then suddenly, after three years, they know that we're dependent on it, so they're gonna do whatever they want because we don't have the dark fiber that we originally in the very first proposal wanted and thought we were getting. And now they keep increasing the costs and and everything. So that's my, my concern is I feel a little bit bound by, by what those costs in three years are gonna be. And I know we don't have a cost of everything is going up, but I can't, I I'm really struggling with the all constant increase and I worry about, we've also had constant increases from them cost-wise as well as the, the changing in services or availability of options. Those two coupled, I, I'm, I'm really struggling.
Just to, just to keep it in context, though, you know, again, I would have to make a significant investment in routers and switches, you know, in the tune of a hundred thousand dollars if we bail out in three years. The two facilities, the only two facilities that would suffer the most is council of aging and the water department, but we can put routers in there and go with internet-only service and then come back here through a VPN. We do that currently with Barry, so this isn't foreign to us. And Barry pushes a lot of, you know, Barry PD pushes a lot of data and uses that link, you know, constantly, you know, seven twenty-four. So, I mean, it is a proven concept and it works, so um, but we do have to pick up those internet, um, circuits. So maybe in three years, there'll be a thousand dollars a month. Not sure, but I think that, and again, it was before my time, but I think Rutland's been on you know, the hundred meg circuit they have now for about five years and the cost hasn't gone up.
I I think part of Leah's concern, though, is if we do the upgrades to the water treatment plant, you're saying that that's gonna be able to handle any upgrades we do at that point?
Yeah, a hundred meg pipe's pretty significant. I mean, you look at Barry PD, I mean, during the day, they've got, you know, four or five people banging our service here constantly. Um, so, and IMC's not a network-friendly um, uh, program. I mean, just the way it runs, all the programs run off of, you know, one of Mike's servers here. So, and that is very unfriendly for the network. But and that, that's what they've got is a hundred meg connection and they're running fine.
Carol, did you have a comment?
Um, I guess I I go back to a comment that I made in one of the previous meetings, and that is who knows what three years is gonna be. Um, I mean, files could decide to come in. There could be a whole different way of providing internet and I, I'm not the person that tends to want to kick the can down the road. But I do feel that we may be over a barrel right now. We, we do this and we spend the next year or year and a half making some strong recommendations back to the town about scenarios and what we can do while we're on our, on our own or at least preparing. Um, and, you know, free cash, if we need to take that out for equipment or whatever that is, I don't, I I don't know what that is, but to to Paul's point, I know you can't really just take some money out and and set it aside. You'd have to do that every year for the next two or three, uh, years and ask for X amount of money to be set aside from free cash to to do this. But I I, again, I feel that we're just, we need to make a move. I don't think we have enough information to do options one and two, where it involves Phoenix that Mike can't get a hold of or get back to, so.
Who mean one and two, Carol, or one and three then?
One and three.
Okay, cuz I, cuz with three, I have the same concerns that Ron has as far as it meeting the, um, the guidelines, uh, federal guidelines for the ARPA funds. Um, so, so I, I I have concerns with three for that reason. Ron, you had a comment?
Yeah, just, just one comment cuz I I heard it twice and I just wanna hear it in the clearest possible terms. And I'm gonna ask the question clearly. Paul, at the end of three years, if we did not decide to go with the managed care services and in that meantime, we updated the water department's SCADA system to improve it, you're saying you would still be able to use some type of uh, network connection to be able to keep the upgraded SCADA services without managed care. Is that accurate?
Yes, because Charter's pulling fiber into that facility, so instead, what they're gonna do is they have their fiber, they're gonna send all internet traffic back to the town of Rutland. All right? Instead, what we would do at the end of the three years is say, we no longer wanna do that. Just put an internet connection in the water department.
I just wanted to make sure, I heard you say I just had to hear that absolutely clearly in my mind because that clearly is gonna happen. Joe is working on upgrading the SCADA system and the technology at the water company, which is really important for the long-term improvement of that facility because we're trying to eventually get it to where we don't have to man that facility on weekends. And part of that is improving that, what they call the SCADA system to be able to do that. So that alone could save the town money along with. So I wanted to make sure that that stays in place as a potential savings to the town and a better operation of that plant. So thank you. You gave me the answer I needed there.
Ron, I don't, I don't really know what that SCADA system is that we're gonna be installing, but I do know a lot of water districts and towns are are using it. They don't have these type of connections as well. So I I do think there are possible ways to possibly run that without the fiber optics, so.
And and that, that's exactly what, well, Lyndon, the way I understand it, I'm not the computer expert here, but by putting up this upgraded SCADA system, it allows you to work remotely to change, you know, to see all the, what's happening in the whole water system, make sure it's running effectively. And in fact, you could make changes through the computer system. And so that means you don't have to be on site to make sure that everything's running smoothly. That's how you get away from having a man there working all weekend, the physical person.
Right, and I think there are a lot of communities that are, in rural areas, that don't have that, this type of access that are operating those. So I do think there probably are some options as far as connectivity, so.
The issue with, um, the water department is just how far away they are. So we gotta pull something there, whether it's fiber, coax, or somebody else comes up with a service that we can utilize. Satellite services, there's a lot of latency, so you type something, you wait for it to come back. If you're streaming something big, it then don't go quick because you're not waiting for it to bounce off the satellite and come back to Earth. Um, so, just the location in that building makes it very difficult. And the advantageous thing about this project was we could do federal funds to get somebody to pull that cable down there and get that facility connected to something more.
Cuz I believe it's, uh, over, uh, I think it was like twenty-two thousand feet in total when they came out and, uh, did the measurements already. And currently, right now, the only thing that the water treatment facility has is DSL connection. They have no coax pulled to the building either. Um, so it, again, I I know Lyndon, a lot of places do have the abilities, but I, I, I believe they probably don't have DSL. They probably have the coax available. Uh, and they're probably a lot closer, like Paul said, they're not twenty-two hundred feet off the road. Um, so it's, it's a tough one.
I mean, Ron, I I mean, I think you need to to let them know regardless of what we decide, that we're not, we're not at all happy with the way that this has it's been, uh, rolling out. I mean, it's not, not professional by any means.
So, so Lyndon, to be clear, I
Clear Monday.
What's that, Paul?
Ron delivered that message loud and clear Monday.
Yeah, I did deliver it already. That was why I got the response. The email you saw come back, cuz I was very clear about how upset I was and how unprofessional I think it was. And I hate to say it because I like Cassie, she's a very nice person, but I think the problem lays directly on her. She's a salesperson. She doesn't have the technical expertise to do the kind of estimate that we should have had upfront. So I do blame her as much as she's sweet and nice. I think she really is the one who made the mistake here. I don't think it was a bait and switch. I think she failed and it was, I hate to say it, incompetence on her part. Um, but that, but that still, it makes me uncomfortable with the company, having somebody out Um, but that, but that still, it makes me uncomfortable with the company, having somebody out front who's doing estimates who doesn't know what she's doing, at least thoroughly, like it should be done in this case, so. Um, I did express that, and I'm gonna continue to express that, because truthfully, I, I'll speak straight up, as I said to you, Linda, this embarrasses me, because I was pushing for this project and I, you know, Spectrum told me all this stuff, and I followed their lead, because I don't have the technical expertise. So I'm just as upset as you guys are that I had to bring it to you twice. It makes me look, it doesn't make me look good either, what she did, and I, I made that very clear to her that, uh, I found the whole thing, uh, very unprofessional. But we'll stay on her, and truthfully, I, I admit that I need Paul and Michael in this because they have the technical expertise. So I've used them and had them involved with every meeting with Cassidy because they know more about the, how the system works than I do, so they're gonna continue to be my lead in this because that, I, I'm not gonna try to say I'm that kind of a technical expert on it, you know? But anyway, if you wanna move forward, you're gonna need a motion if that, was it thirty-eight, eight eighty plus, let's say another twenty-five hundred from ARPA funds, so you'd have to make a motion for that amount to transfer that amount, uh, from ARPA to, uh, to the contract for this, this project of that, if that's the way you wanna move forward.
Oh, then do you say it's twenty-five hundred or three thousand?
I, I, I'd go three thousand if it's, um, just to be safe. I mean, if it's twenty-five hundred, it's twenty-five hundred. We're not gonna spend the money. You know what I mean? If it's a thousand, it's a thousand, but.
Mike, Mike, is there a way, can you put that slide back up again? Because I think it had a motion. I sure can.
Do you have the actual thing now?
Thinking that a motion had the amount, didn't it?
Well, it had, it, it had something that we could use as a motion.
Yeah, something we can use.
Uh, the first, first of option two. There you go.
Yep.
So it'd be four, eight eighty, though.
Yeah, use that. That's very good, actually.
Um, so I'll, if we're ready, I'll make a motion that, um, we authorize an additional forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars of ARPA funds to charter Spectrum for the missing equipment from the original contract.
Do, do we have a second?
Whitman will begrudgingly second it and just, Ron, I just, I really want you to stay on them and let them know that, I mean, they can watch the, watch our meeting tonight and see how, uh, frustrated and kind of disenfranchised we are with them. And there's absolutely no trust in them, in my opinion, so.
I agree.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussions? Okay, we have a roll call?
Annoyed eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye with similar concerns as Leah has.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll keep on them as much as we possibly can, so.
Yeah, duck, tell them not to bother coming back again because there is no way that we're gonna reconsider any additional changes at this point. If they can't, you know, abide by the contract that they've agreed upon, then, you know, we're done, in my opinion.
We'll start charging them for our time.
Hey, listen, I would, I hate to say that. I would have been really upset if you said no because I'm, I'm just as annoyed, so I, I frankly, I think I would have made the same decision you guys did, but like you, it tastes bitter, you know?
All right, just, do we have any other, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, sorry, I just wanted to say thanks to Mike and Paul also, because I know it's a lot of time and back and forth on their part as well, so, you know, thank them and thanks, Ron, for, for the back and forth with, with Spectrum as well, so.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Um, does anybody else have anything else, or if we, if not, if they can get a motion to both?
Motion to adjourn?
Whitman seconds.
Okay, uh, roll, roll call?
Annoyed eye.
Whitman eye.
And Nichols eye. All right, thank you all.